Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regularly scheduled Escalon City Council meeting of October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Merkin.
Here.
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Councilmember Albs called in absent and excused. Mayor Protam Swift.
Here.
Mayor Leggero.
Here, thank you, alright, that takes us to our presentation for the evening. A proclamation declaring the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Somebody here, alright, I'll read this. We have a microphone with, it's recording, so, alright. It's a proclamation, October two thousand and eighteen, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, and is sustained by societal indifference. And whereas, when a family member is abused, it can have long-term damaging effects on the victim that also leave a mark on family, friends, and the community at large. And whereas domestic violence is widespread and is devastating to society as a whole, but particularly women and children. And whereas one in every four women and one in every seven men will experience domestic violence during their lifetime. One in every fifteen children are exposed to domestic violence every year. And whereas, during Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we recommit ourselves to ending violence within our homes, our communities, and our country. And whereas, to effectively respond to domestic violence, we must provide supportive services that meet the immediate needs of victims, including safe shelter and housing, medical care, access to justice, culturally specific services, and economic opportunity so that they can escape the cycle of abuse. And whereas Women's Center Youth and Family Services has led the way in the city of Escalon in addressing domestic violence by providing twenty-four-hour helpline services and emergency shelter to victims and survivors. Responding to emergency calls and empowering those impacted by domestic violence to chart their own course for healing. And whereas Staff and Volunteers of Women's Center Youth and Family Services vow to work year-round to encourage every person in the city of Escalon to end domestic violence by providing young people with education about healthy relationships, changing attitudes that support violence, and creating a future where all women, men, and children can live free from violence and exploitation. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs and victim service providers, I, Mayor Jeff Leggero of Escalon, California, do hereby proclaim the month of October two thousand and eighteen to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to dedicate themselves to breaking the cycle of violence by wearing purple on Thursday, October twenty-fifth, known as Purple Thursday, and joining Women's Center Youth and Family Services' annual night of remembrance. Let's remember and honor those who have lost their lives as a result of domestic violence in San Joaquin County. Dated today's date, October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Signed by me, City Escalon.
Thank you very much.
That takes us to the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mayor Leggero, regarding item number two, I will be abstaining from voting on check number six zero eight seven eight.
Alright.
I move to approve the consent.
Second. Motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Takes us to staff communications.
Mayor and council before you tonight are staff, the monthly staff reports, including the Recreation Department, Building Department, Police Department, Development Services, Public Works, the Water and Wastewater Departments, and the Monthly Treasures Report. Staff is available if you have any questions on those.
Any questions, council?
I'm just curious about one question regarding the depth to the water, how do we actually go, the water level rise last month?
Excuse me?
The water level rose last month?
Yeah.
How'd it do that? I mean, it's not, you know, it should be going-
That's a great, great question.
Yeah.
I think it's just the area we're getting in, and I think next month it'll be completely different, too, right now, I think not having rain's kind of affecting a little bit of things.
Yeah.
It's hard to say.
Yeah, okay, I'm just curious when I saw that, and what's the progress on the lift station?
Um, it has been, um-
It got finalized in its mechanical drawings last week, we finalized that engineer and I, so we're really hoping here in the next couple of weeks to month, we're breaking ground, we're close, we're really close to getting going.
But it is moving forward, so, yeah.
And we survived that other-
Since last week, I've been amazed.
I know, I know.
Yeah, we did survive.
Yeah.
We escaped out of there, luckily the crew that's been here's been through before, so we got on it fairly quick, and it didn't turn into a few weeks, it was just a week, so.
Yeah, yeah, it could've been a lot worse if they didn't catch it, yeah.
Definitely.
Glad they caught it. That's it.
That it? Any other questions?
Well, yeah, I did cut down the water conserva- conservation area. It says per capita usage for September was down this month, over last month, to two hundred and nineteen point forty-seven gallons per person day using, the average is two hundred gallons a day?
Per person.
Per person. How are we gonna manage when it's fifty gallons per day per household?
It's gonna be a struggle, all agencies, I was at SSJID today for our surface water treatment meeting, and it was brought up there, too, and even other agencies are questioning, how are we gonna monitor this and how are you gonna be able to maintain that?
We're struggling to understand it honestly, how we're gonna be able to do so.
I was wondering, was there any literature, any research as to why they came upon that number, or is that just where the dart landed?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Well, you think, you think the city should start putting it in the newsletter or the newspaper, because it's about two years away, right?
Correct, right, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm looking, and it's, if it's down, we dropped nineteen or twenty percent, and we're two hundred and nineteen gallons, and they want us to get it fifty, I mean, I don't even know if that's-
During the drought time, I wanna say that we were closer to like the one fifty, one sixty range, so definitely a scene of grow, you know, the consumption grow, um, in the, on that side of it. So, and honestly, I would, I was kind of surprised that we were down because, because of the time of the month it is, yeah.
That might have been because of a little bit of sticker shock, I know I-
Maybe, because of bills, yeah.
August bill, and hey, what happened, you know, and so that might have been a reaction to that, I noticed that, too, it was a little odd that it was gonna go down now, that could be it.
Yep.
So I suppose that was more of a comment than it was a question.
Sorry, we don't have an answer for you.
Alright, any other, any other questions on staff reports? Alright.
Do you have any?
I have a couple items, did you have any first?
No.
Okay, so I wanted to give you an update on a couple items we discussed in the last few meetings. The first one being, the question came up a few meetings ago regarding our definition of oversized vehicles, I have checked around with other cities, have not found a definition for oversized vehicle in the vehicle code. And upon looking around what other cities have in terms of oversized vehicle, and then some of them have them just defined as recreational vehicle. The smallest I've seen is eighteen feet, and that was with Ripon, and then we get into some other cities, Houston, who defines it as a recreational vehicle, is twenty, and then other cities trying to surf the internet and find places are more along the lines of twenty to twenty-five feet long. So there are some cities out there that have them defined a little larger, they're typically cities that are located down south more and much larger than us, of course, so, I'm not sure if that really would matter, but I wanted to give you a status update on that, also-
Dominique, I'm just wondering, have you?
Sure.
I'm just wondering if, what Oakdale has, and the reason I say that, if Oakdale has an order of civil ours or what, because I've been watching every Tuesday morning for the last month, couple of, you know, twenty, twenty-two foot boats, right on the same court that the mayor lives on. So either they don't have one, or it's complaint-based, or I was just curious if you looked at Oakdale.
Because I believe, I did look at them, they don't have a definition for oversized vehicle, but they have the standard language that a lot of cities have, not supposed to be parked on the street for more than seventy-two hours. So our language specific to oversized vehicles is they're not supposed to be parked on the street Monday through Friday, so, um, you know, and typically, it might be out there a few days before it's tagged, and at this point, we've been tagging first as opposed to just giving somebody a citation, so, um, but yeah, I don't believe Oakdale had a definition, I'll double-check, but I think they're the ones that just don't have it defined, they didn't have a size requirement, if it's a boat or a trailer, their code covers vessels, trailers, RVs, of all sorts, yeah, but I'll double-check on Oakdale.
So they just default to the standard seventy-two hour?
Yeah, and that's where most of them default, and then we did have a comment from the resident located regarding, you know, his boat and trailer out on the street. We did put in an application with PG&E to find out how much it would cost to relocate or move the pole, they estimated three thousand dollars. We did the application on, on the resident's behalf, wanted to advise you of that, whatever direction, at this point, we're thinking of just putting a letter in the mail and advising him how much it would cost to relocate the pole, and they are able to relocate it, but they, that resident would have to tell PG&E where they want it relocated on their property, so, I'm not sure if they, where they would be able to place it, or if they put it on the other side or whatnot, so that's where that one left off, and then-
Thank you for following up on that.
Oh, no problem.
So, try and respond to his concerns as best we can.
Yeah, and then we did receive a request from Gracia Electric, located at twenty twenty Main Street, they're requesting to have a loading zone put in front of their building, in front of their business, so trucks can make their deliveries, they have a lot of deliveries that are coming in and out, and there's either not enough parking available for them to be able to park, or the parking's taking up in front of their building, so they're requesting, and our municipal code requires city council approval to direct the city manager whether a loading zone can be put there or not, so I wanted to present that request. It's just to help them conduct business, our loading zones are indicated by a yellow paint line and stenciled loan deal only, and then they are to be restricted for loading purposes during limited hours and days, so we would be able to set the limited hours and days, and then they would be stenciled in yellow paint with black letters. And then, if approved, we would go ahead and move forward with that, and be the ones to do it ourselves.
The one that used to be the cabinet shop?
On the other side.
Right across the street from my shop.
Right across the street, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Just to the east of the garage, Escalon, Main Street Garage.
Was there a wood place there or something?
Yes.
I can't remember, I think so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Gonzalez, Bill Gonzalez, just have a cabinet shop there.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask Justin, I mean, how much traffic do you really see?
He gets quite a bit, it's hectic, and a lot of times, we actually let him pull a lot of the stuff close to our yard or in our yard, some of the trucks that come because of traffic, I'm actually the one that's been on him till he needs to get something taken care of, because, because Main Street, it gets tied down, and he has FedEx trucks, but the big diesel trucks, not just delivery trucks, and they're half, literally half in the park in the middle of the road, and, and stuff like that, so it is needed, he has-
It'd be a bona fide solution in this case.
And I really don't think it'd hinder anybody in the area, because there's businesses in the areas, and it's, you know, it's not saying that no one can ever park there, I don't think, it's just, it's limited to loading and unloading, so I mean, it definitely would help the flow of traffic, and it would help his business.
And he's, he's expanding as well, he purchased the building next door, so he's got a higher demand now, because he's taking that over.
Right next to him, yeah.
He's taking care of that building right now.
Stuff on the outside, so he's making it look a lot better, so.
It could look worse.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can put time restrictions on that, it's just a loading zone during these time periods.
You could do that if you like, yeah.
Okay, it sounds like that's a recommendation from staff as to-
I would say Monday through Friday, typical business hours.
You guys can work with him and see what's on his best, so, alright, everybody in agreement with that? Alright. Alright.
Did you have more? Because I did have one more, um, I don't know if you've noticed, but we did have one space rented for, in the back lot here, but there's been a couple more inquiries that we've gotten for longer trailers, so, I have limited space where I could do the longer trailers, and they would technically be taking up two of the spots. So, we have indicated to those with the longer trailers that it would be the cost of the two spots at the hundred dollars, and one of them did reach out to Councilmember Albs, and he had questioned us on the, on the price, so I didn't know if the council wanted to set a different rate for that. I mean, technically, they are gonna have to take up two spots, or if we were okay just charging the two spots going forward. We'd have to advertise for the rate, that's why it wasn't put on this to make a decision or anything, because we would actually need to advertise that we were gonna add a separate rate on that, I think it was suggested by Councilmember Albs to do something like a seventy-five dollar fee.
If they're larger.
If they're the larger, if they're taking up more than one spot.
It'd be nice to know what the, you know, what their options are.
Right.
What other storage areas charge.
Yeah, and I think that when we were looking, you know, it ranged from the fifty to ninety-five dollar range, but different types of facilities, too, because you're at, you know, typically a gated facility.
I would think that the, the larger trailers would have a more difficult time finding places to-
Yeah, I, I had one inquiry, well, actually, he's already turned in some of his paperwork, and he, he understood when I had explained that to him, so, um-
Do you know what the rationale is about giving them a discount for taking up two spots, because I would think that normally if you take up two spots versus one, take up two seats in an airplane instead of one, you pay for two seats.
Yeah, I'm not sure, unless it just, they thought it was, you know, too high, so.
Well, I think that's a good deal, but I also think that it sends a message that he goes out and tells his friends, hey, park the big one over there because you get it for half price, you take up two spaces for one, and then the next thing you know, you're-
And yeah, and we are very limited of how many those we can take, because most of the parking spaces are only the thirty feet, so anything outside of that is very limited on how many we would, we would be able to have back there.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that if they feel comfortable enough, or if they're looking into parking in an ungated, unsecured lot, then they're probably having trouble, or at least, it's still more cost-effective, at least.
Right.
Than parking in a gated, secured lot, so therefore, I think that if you go with, you know, the same rate per space, I think it's completely reasonable, in this case, you know, versus giving them a discount.
Right.
I don't, I don't know why the discount.
Right. Okay.
Do we know when, or what the timeline is on the new one that's coming?
Um, the new project on McHenry there was approved at Planning Commission last Tuesday night, and I don't, do you have any idea on his timeline?
I know he's moving pretty quick, but I'm not sure exactly how long it's going to be, I think timeline-wise, I can't, I can't recall.
Yeah, I think the biggest, yeah, I think the biggest, probably part of that project will be the removal of the median.
That might need some arrangement.
Yeah, I mean, but otherwise, they're gonna have to, you know, level the land, and they have the storm basin going in there, and then we'll, we'll have to go through the whole map change, because we're splitting it into separate lots and stuff, so.
I'm just seeing when that opens, I'm seeing the popularity of our-
I would assume so, yeah. Yes.
Then we can consider discounts. Change rates.
Storage lot, or-
Alright, any other discussion on that topic? Any other issues, any reports?
Other than, apparently, pressed somebody over the weekend, because one of the vacant houses in town over near Irwin and one twenty was tagged with quite a bit of comments, most of it was directed at the PD with some obscenities laced to it, so, what information we got was that three juveniles were seen in the area, we did a surveillance on Saturday to see if they came back, but no luck, we put the drone out, Public Works came out and immediately cleaned up the stuff that was visible. But they not only tagged a vacant house, they also tagged like three other private residences and vehicles in the area, with similar graffiti. Those residents had no relation, well, only one did, one had a relationship to law enforcement, the other two did not.
But hopefully nobody saw it.
Ring dot com.
Well, one super brief question, if that's okay, how Portina doing the car show?
Well, we didn't place, that comments, but we didn't place.
I'm just curious.
Alright, that's alright.
Yeah, alright.
Alright, any other staff reports, staff communications, anything?
Nope.
Alright, takes us to item number seven, discussion on city-owned parkland properties located on Escalon Balota and Saint John.
So, at the last meeting, council had given me some homework, one of that being about potential short-term leases on the property, and then exploring the bond, and getting some verbal appraisals on the properties. So I have one report back to you, which is on the short-term lease, I haven't got all of the appraisals from realtors yet, and, or did the homework on the bond, so, I did talk to the farmer that's been open to this, and on, in regards to Escalon Balota, if it was a short-term lease, talking three to five years, he would not want to manage the house, therefore, the house would have to be, you know, managed by the city, which I would assume we would possibly hire a property management company to handle that. And then, he is offering fifteen percent of the crop, and the city is responsible for property tax, irrigation, and electricity, which those are about twelve thousand a year. House rental is gonna be, depending upon what property management costs us, if we stayed at the twelve fifty, I would say we would probably break, we would probably get about twelve thousand from the rental, so that would pretty much wipe out, you know, our other costs, and then, I estimated using two thousand and seventeen's crop, at fifteen percent would be right around the eight thousand to eighty-five hundred dollars. But, it's, you know, it's being maintained, it's not, you know, we're not having to do the weeds or anything like that, so, and there's still a little bit of revenue there. On the Catherine Saint John, again, a three to five-year lease, and because that one is in a much less desirable condition, he wanted to keep the first twelve thousand dollars from the crop revenue, and then after that, he would do the fifteen percent. So same thing, the city would pay the property tax and the irrigation, there's no electricity there, and that's about twenty-four hundred dollars a year. When I based it on two thousand and seventeen's crop, that would mean that we would get about twenty-one hundred dollars, so we'd actually have technically a loss of three hundred dollars, but we would have a savings where we wouldn't have to be maintaining the property either. So, the house on, on Escalon Balota is vacant right now, and the property is turned back over to us, and officially tomorrow, electricity will be in our name there, and Public Works has been going out checking it, so, if, if the council agrees that we're probably going to be at least handling the house, I think that we need to start, you know, looking at what we're gonna do and how we're gonna move forward on that one. If I go out and look for property management, or if there's a different direction that the council wanted me to take.
Well, I mean, I just, I, I think I agree, you know, we've hashed and rehashed this, we have a hundred different scenarios, and the scenario that we're looking at now is if we start looking down that bonding track, and the way I see it, this is essentially gonna be a holding pattern for these properties. They're gonna be in much better shape if somebody's farming them versus letting them go to heck, so I agree with that a hundred percent. If this whole bond concept doesn't gain traction, then I'm sure this grower's gonna, will be receptive to, hey, it didn't work out, what do you think about it long-term, you know? If it does gain traction, while you're, you're probably at least about three years away before you get funding, assuming the bond- Before you get funding, assuming the bond gets traction, assuming it's on the twenty-twenty ballot. And it's all, these are all possibilities and assuming it passes, you know, then you're looking at getting funding sometime in twenty-twenty-one, so there's your three years, so. I think, you know, really, we're not planning on getting rich off this off these, I think that right now. This is the best case scenario for the holding pattern that I think we're gonna be in, you know, for the next a couple of years, you know?
Well, I I'm for uh uh getting an appraisal and selling the seven acres and. And uh not worrying about three to five-year lease and move forward on taking care of the parking issue at the at the community center. And the other nineteen acres, well. It's, it'll be taken care of, you know, so. That's my uh desires.
I will, I will also say that um I had a recreation commission meeting after our last meeting. And I was at the planning commission meeting and at both meetings I was hit up about um or it was. You know, mentioned um regarding the parking at um the fields and um. You know, like what our plan is and what we're going to do, so um. I know that one thing that has been mentioned is the potential of at the nineteen acres. Tearing out some of the trees there and allowing them to park in the dirt. Um so uh while it is totally a possibility. Um and I'm sure that that's could something I could negotiate with this farmer that I've been talking to, um. My concern would be, you know, what happens or what kind of work it's gonna take to get it into a level state to begin with. The removal of the trees and then. After a year, is it gonna be, when are you guys gonna improve this, there's holes? You know, are people not gonna wanna park there, you know, are are we setting ourselves up for more down? Which, I mean, we obviously know there's gonna be more down the road, I, you know, I, but are we gonna make it worse by having this open field and. Nobody parking there, so I I just really wanted to bring that out too, that. The parking has definitely been, you know, brought up on several different occasions.
Well, and this, the reason I I wanna talk about this is because this council addresses two issues, one with the. The silly and getting that process going with the seven acres to alleviate some of the parking issues there, okay, uh. You know, maybe the next year or two or some like or three versus what you just mentioned and the reason that uh. And I and I talked with council member Fox about it and of course talked with Justin about it. That parking situation is acute out there, you've got kiddos crossing Arthur, you have people who live on Arthur. Just nervous all get out or turning on Arthur, they're they're crossing Escalon Balota and if you, we own that land already. And if you remove a couple of those rows of trees, the first two rows next to the feed store and I've. Talked to the feed store about it too, just to get there, do you guys have, what do what are you guys seeing that we're not seeing? Take those first two rows of trees out there going all the way back to the um the corner where the rookie field is at, okay? Is it temporary? Yes, it's temporary, it's gonna be considered temporary again because of this. Bond scenario, okay, um and I got to talk with Justin, you know, uh this last week too. It is level, well, it may get unlevel as when the trees are popped out, but then that can be leveled out and out again, you already have fences. You have fence line there with a gate with gates, you know, for people to come in, the two heaviest divisions you have. In rec for uh and especially in ba- in baseball little league are your T-ball and your rookie divisions. That leaves pressures off the main parking lot, a lot of those parents, if they choose to do so, can park right there, right next to their field. Uh that reduces the amount of kiddos crossing either uh Es- Escalon Balota or uh. Arthur, also alleviates some pressure on the weekends that we have the community center rented. It's just one more option, one option to do it, now regarding the issue of, well, what would happen if people are gonna say, well, are you gonna do more the following year? Again, if this bond scenario gains traction, then I think the correct response would be. What are you going to do to help us to promote this bond? No, really, throw it back at. We can really do with the money that we have right now, you know? I mean, it's it's much better than throwing our hands up in the air and saying, no, we're not gonna do anything because we can do something to solve this. Or at least in the short run, we can do something right, you know, this winter to solve this problem so that by little league next year. Boom, you've got another sixty, seventy parking spaces open, uh we roughly thought it might be about a half an acre out of out, you know, so. I don't know, I think it's something that we really ought to pursue.
Is is it flood irrigated or don't, do they have air um sprinklers over there? It's both? Cause that was one thing that I hadn't thought about was the irrigation along those trees there.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, there might have to be some reworking and I don't know what the cost of removal of trees are either.
Well, again, you've got a few other op- few options, I was, one person suggested to me, you know, can you imagine if you put out, you know, advertised it? Okay, listen, if you wanna take out two, three trees, take the wood home with you, you know, boom, you got seasoned cordwood for the next year, you gotta season it. You know, you could do that, uh I think one thought was, okay, well, GNF. What could you guys do for us, even with bucking the brush later or or preferably shredding the brush later, you know? You have GNF, you have Lucas, you have Roach Brothers, would any of them be willing to? You know, and that, these are all things that need to be looked at before we embark on this thing. I'm not saying we just go do it without a without a bad plan, who's bucking the brush, how are we taking the trees out? You know, can Pella Works pop the roots, you know, do we have somebody that can level the field out? You know, I think all those things we look at first before we say we go ahead on it. But I think it's definitely worth pursuing.
Yeah, and so I guess my negotiations with the farmer should have that that preference in there about.
Yeah.
You know, precedent about this may come up, come about where we may wanna pull out some of these trees and.
Right.
How how will that affect you?
And if he's like most of these farmers are basing everything on per acre. Okay, and yeah, he's got an economy of scale to move in his equipment, move in his fertilizer, things like that. But I think that the loss of a half of half of an acre, I don't think it's gonna be any kind of a deal killer.
Right.
Based on his own calculations and mo- most growers, I mean, that that's how they calculate this stuff out.
Um so the other side of that would be the house too, that we would wanna consider because it is technically open to the orchard. So I don't know if it's something that we just leave as is or if we give them some privacy and we have to put in a fence.
Well, see, and that's, that's the other thought, my original thought, when I talked with Justin, you take the first four rows out to a certain point, then council member Fox suggested. Why don't you go with the first two rows all the way down, one of the assets, uh ideas behind that is you do give the homeowner. And I think, I think that's a better idea though.
There'd still be trees between the homeowner and the parking.
Yeah, yeah, you'll still have plenty of room for cars to pull in, turn into a spot, you always make the assumption that they're all trucks, okay? And uh I think you'll have plenty of room for that.
So dust from the cars.
In the springtime?
What we'd look at what uh DeRusi did to his corner across from the community.
With the with the walnut holes?
Holes on there that are about six inches deep.
Yeah.
And that may not be a bad thought to tap in into in terms of.
And I'd be surprised if we got a a negative response from him if uh uh he could help us out. The city in a way to.
Oh, right.
Eliminate that Arthur.
Well, I mean, he's been, he's been a very good neighbor, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
I definitely cannot um say enough about that because he is totally allowed, you know, parking on that. That property there and always worked with us, so um and I have in the past talked to him about those. Um when we were discussing the prospect property, I had talked to him about those. I had gotten some comments back that that the walnut holes are slippery when they're wet. Um from a couple of people, so I don't know if that's true or not. But in one of those instances, I know that they had not been spread, they were kind of just slumped in a pile and it was wet. So it wasn't, it wasn't packed, so I know that could have been part of that one, that issue.
Yeah, I I'd just like to add that if he's uh uh the farmers uh open or receptive to these two rows all the way back to. Uh that uh last field to the west, uh just a little uh small uh thing, but. There's a pedestrian gate at the west end and east end to make the pedestrians ver- you you wouldn't have to worry about putting in fencing. The gates are already there, uh so. My opi- my my opinion is and thinking is that's one way to move forward to eliminate the uh. Uh parking issue and it's a little, not as drastic as Angelo's tear out the eighteen acres and then. They'll have to get it built, but that's uh, yeah, if it can be worked out, that'd be real nice and move in that direction. And my question is, uh anyone that approached you about the parking uh from the planning commission and the recreation commission? They have any ideas or suggestions on what to do?
Um, no, uh it was brought up, um it was mentioned by one um at the rec commission meeting about. The potential sell of the Saint John property, um and. You know, they, cause they had asked what would, what would it cost to do parking over there, which is the two million that we had talked about before. Um and they said, well, if you sell the property, then that gets you, you know, a portion of it there, but. It's still a big difference, um the other thing I I did neglect to mention was they did bring up about the bathrooms there too. So I did tell them that there was, you know, some planned improvements on the bathrooms, but they're still gonna be the same structure, same. Type of, you know, material in there, it's it's metal, it's concrete floor, you, there's only so much that you can do, you know, plus. Um maintaining them, but um I, at the end of the rec commission, um. There was the comment about pulling trees also and just letting people park there. Um from the planning commission, one of the big concerns were on that one was. That somebody had rented the barbecue area, eh, I think there were two different instances where they had rented the covered area. And they had blocked off spots, um and um so they felt like um. They maybe that we should reserve spots for those that have rented that area, certain number of spots, um but. Thinking that through afterwards, you know, that would be very tough, um because. If you say it's for the renters and then the renters show up, you know, you don't always know if there's a renter or not, so you could have. Spaces that are open and there's no renter or or people just park there anyway, um. You know, they also wanted to make sure that when they're renting the location that we're letting them know, which we do. You know, especially during soccer and baseball seasons, you know, it's on Saturdays, we try to, you know, um. Strongly um iterate about the parking issues out there, so.
Have you in the past got some kind of a rough estimate of redoing those bathrooms out there?
Not redoing them, what I had looked at was the prefab. Yeah, and the prefab I wanna say was at two fifty, two hundred fifty thousand. And that is basically that you pull up the building, it's the same footprint as what we have there. Um and we would just pull down that building and place the building on top of it, of course. You know, there's gonna be some footings or whatever, you know, improvements, that kind of way, but.
Well, what what is the bare minimum, do you think needs to be done with those bathrooms?
Um I can't, Justin can probably.
Basically, the bare minimum is kind of what we've already approved, we just need to go in there and strip everything out as far as toilet sinks. Um partitions and completely sanitize everything, repaint and install with new stainless.
And that's what, you can do that within-house or you have to take it out to bed?
We will do that in-house.
That was, what, about sixty thousand dollars?
No, it was like thirty.
Yeah, about thirty thousand.
Twenty-eight or thirty, yeah.
Which is already in the budget for us to do and on my agenda, but just haven't got quite to it yet.
So and then, eh, you know, I I mentioned about you can't even put, they thought, I could, I said something about you can't put the paper towels in there because. Unfortunately, the paper towels just all end up in the toilets and we have other issues with plumbing then, um and the question was asked, well. Do we lock the doors and we don't, and I don't even think that those doors lock out there, the ones that we currently have. Um and they asked why not and I said, well, we don't have staff that's on at eleven o'clock at night that we would send out to lock doors, so. Um so they, you know, that was the other inquiry about, well, can we lock, cause. They were making the assumption that those issues are happening after hours. But I don't truly feel that those issues are happening after hours, I, it is when the park is full with kids. You know, that that it is happening, so even locking the doors, you're not gonna, you know, eliminate those kinds of issues.
Yeah, you you don't have the issues after, uh what happens there after hours is not, and I don't wanna say this very loud. You don't have graffiti, you don't have people living in them, and I've seen other towns and you do, you don't have those issues, it's not an after-hours issue.
After-hours, any activity there is usually investigated.
What um what is there, what is the requirement for parking out there? Do we have any idea on a busy soccer day or?
Oh, what what would be required um to accommodate all of that? I have no idea.
We don't even wanna say the number out loud if we knew it.
Well, and that's why I think that, I think this this orchard option ought to be, you know, we ought to take a look at it and I think this is something that we can have. Ready to go by the beginning of little league next year, and this doesn't preclude the notion of, you know. Doing something with that seven acres and so on that too, but that that is gonna be a little bit of a longer timeframe if you wanted to. Put a little more parking and, you know, knock down the hills, you know, behind the feeds or stuff like that, it doesn't preclude not doing that at all. You know, um now granted, if we end up going the whole, this bond around or the whole thing actually succeeds. Well, that changes the entire game altogether because obviously where we at, we're right where the skate park's gonna be at, okay, but. I think that if that bonds ago, then the skate parks go and all the parking according to plans ago. You know, and if the bond's not ago, well, then that, then that puts the skate park having to find its own money still and. You know, I know that's an uphill battle, they've worked very hard at it though, you know, so it's almost goes in one or of two directions, I see this whole situation. You know, before the short run, I really think we ought to look at that's that orchard parking.
So if um just what I'm getting from the council this evening is that, I I am gonna. Locate a property management for the house, I'm gonna talk to the farmer again about the short-term lease at Escalon Balota. Um on Saint John and Catherine, the farmer, the current farmer has it until December. So I have a little bit more time that I can get those appraisals and then we can make that decision where we wanna go with that. Um and so, I mean, if that's the correct path, we can um. I'll also talk with the farmer about, you know, removing some of those trees and then we can start looking into. What might some of those costs be to get that, to move forward with that? Does that sound accurate?
Good, maybe you have uh one question you can uh ask both farmers, uh if they were to pull those out. Then what's the spacing between the trees that they would replant? The same distance now or will they double up the trees, like some I see, looks like they're about six to eight feet apart. These out here about what, twelve, fifteen?
Fifteen, I think about fifteen apart.
I'm just kinda curious, yeah.
Anybody in the audience have any comments or anything to add to the?
Fifteen hundred, Tamara Court, yeah, I got a few comments, um. I uh fully agree with uh councilman Fox that we need to sell the seven acres. I think if you walked around and you talked to every single person in this town and you said, hey, guess what, the city owns seven acres of trees. Out off of Saint John and Catherine, do you think that's benefiting you? I think they'd say, no, that's not benefiting me at all, I think you need to sell the land now, you need to take that money. You need to buy a new bathroom, we don't need to do some in-house thing just because it's cheap. This town is constantly trying to play small ball with everybody and that's why I totally disagree with the idea of pulling out a few acres just so everybody can park in the dirt. Um Escalon is an expensive town, it's expensive to live here, it's expensive to purchase goods and services here. And the only way that this town gets money, because the average household income is too high for any sort of funding. Maybe there's some grants out there, but we have nobody to go find them, is to issue a bond. And I think that the school district, I think we've done it out of order, we should have issued a bond first to do the park, to bring our water in. With SSJID and to fix our infrastructure, but now the city's doing it first and I think measure E is going to pass for twenty-five million. And then I think the. And then I think the immediate move from the city council needs to be to get another big bond on the twenty twenty ballot, and we need to start marketing it, it needs to be a sales pitch. Where we need to show the community, hey, guess what, look what we're gonna do for you guys. And I don't think pulling out some trees just so we can park in the dirt when our kids play soccer, uh, is an answer, I think it's another small ball move. I don't think that's what this town needs, and I don't think that's what this town deserves, and I think that people would gladly pay some additional fees on their property taxes, if we could explain to them what it's going to do for us, what it's going to achieve and how it's gonna improve their lives. And even though there's a lot of pushback against the idea of growth in this town, I believe that it's inevitable, I think whether I say it or whether anybody else does, eventually, we're gonna annex new land, eventually, this town is going to grow, and I think we need to have some amenities that are gonna bring in nice peoples, we have a nice park and a nice facility that's got new facilities and it looks like the towns put some effort into it. And hasn't just done the cheapest way possible, you're gonna get nicer families, get nicer people. And that's what makes up a nice community, that's my opinion on everything, thank you.
All right. Any other comments, concerns? One of the issues, you know, the bond is, it sounds like that's the direction that we wanna go, that's a long-term solution, the problem is the interim. You know, what do we do between now and twenty twenty? And that's where we need to start, uh, at least trying to alleviate the pressure out there, do the, do what we can with what we have. In the hopes that a bond passes, it will complete the the process out there, so.
Oh, no, I agree, it's not a neither either, it's both. You do both, and keep in mind, you know, the age of those trees, they've got, you, they probably have about three years left regardless of what scenario we go with. If the bond works and it's a go, then we go with the expansion, I think we're gonna have a fantastic place. Uh, and therefore the trees go. If the bond does not gain traction, or if it does not pass, then unfortunately, then you have to go with a long-term lease and the trees go. So either way, they're gonna be gone within three years anyway, and so this is a short-term short-term fix to alleviate, like the mayor said, uh, an immediate acute problem. But I think you you do both, I think you do both, you go after both.
Yeah, I just got a quick comment on that, I, like I get, like again, I said, I think nobody knows, I've talked to a lot of people in town, nobody knows we own the seven acres, nobody owns, nobody knows that we own that land between the community center and the and the golf course. I think if the town, you have to be strategic here, it's 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 thinking, it's a sales pitch, how do you sell a bond? You're asking people to approve something. And you don't do it by just slapping it on the ballot, which I think the school district's made a huge mistake, is that they didn't market it at all, all of a sudden, we all of a sudden see, oh, measure E, what the hell is this? And uh, oh, it's a new property tax. If the town was to make a distinct decisive move, like let's sell the seven acres, let's take the two hundred and fifty thousand we make from that, let's put in a nice new bathroom, which people want. And then guess what, I don't care, I mean, say the eighteen acres makes a twenty thousand dollars a year or whatever, it's it's a pretty nominal amount, actually. If we take that, say you leveled the trees, and then for two years, we have a big sign there saying, guess what's coming? It's coming, it's coming on the ballot, twenty twenty, we want you to vote for it. I think it's a sales pitch, I think it, I think it's something that the council needs to sell, I think it's something that staff needs to sell. And I think we need to be willing to put the time in order for people to approve such a project, I don't think it's just something we can go, well, if it passes, if it gets traction, I hear that a lot. If it passes, if it gets traction, it's a matter of being proactive, making it get traction, making it get awareness, making people understand, this is gonna be good for the town, thank you.
We had the uh, the property already, the Cabral Regional Park there. And one of the issues was that was just barren land, and it was barren land for an awful long time. And we had to maintain it, so we were paying for the maintenance of it, whether, you know, it's ripping it, mowing weeds, whatever needed to be done. So, I I don't think we need to completely eliminate, you know, eighteen or nineteen acres of almonds that could be producing some sort of income for us, if nothing else, it pays for itself as a wash. So, again, the bond is a long-term fix, and I agree, it requires a lot of salesmanship, you know, and and we've got time to to work on that. Um, I think Tammy's recap, we need to get on the property management for the house. Need to get that occupied, so we don't have to have public works out there checking to see, you know, if somebody's decided to move in or whatever. So we get that rented, we start generating the income from that. I think we need to get on the uh, the alleviating, the parking problem, so I think that the moving forward on some costs or some volunteer work, or if the farmer's willing to come in there and rip those trees out and give us some options for the parking. You know, they're already parking on dirt along the side of a road, so, you know, dirt along the the park itself doesn't seem like a bad idea. The Parks Foundation, um, is in the process, they've hired a grant writer, the grant writer is uh under contract or pretty close to being under contract, if not already. They're trying to get uh some funding for the uh skate park. So there's a potential that even if there's a three to five year lease, that that uh, space that's designated for the skate park is actually gonna get funding and they can move forward on it. Um, so there's potential that that's gonna happen sooner rather than later, and I think February was the the target for uh uh, whether they were gonna get this grant or not. And if they don't get this one, they're gonna continue on, cause they've got other options for other grants, so. That uh, whatever lease, um, is negotiated, needs to take that in into consideration. That that, it's potential that that could happen a lot sooner than three to five years. Um, the uh the seven acres, the Saint John property, I I agree with Danny. You know, I just don't think we need to be maintaining that. If we can get that, uh, get those appraisals for that, get a value on that, then we can make a more educated decision, but I I certainly don't think that that's, we've talked about being landlords and you know, in the property management business, that's not very uh productive for this staff time and everything else that we have. So if we can get those appraisals done, start, uh, we've got till December on that, so we've got a little bit of time to to work through that. Um, and then we make a decision, once we get that information, see what kind of value we're gonna get out of that, and then once if it's gonna be sold, then we decide how we're gonna invest that money back into the park. Um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a bathroom is uh, pretty steep. Um, unless it's, you know, being paid for by the bond. Um, so I still think that having our public works take a look at at upgrades out there is better than the situation that we have right now, and it's a whole lot cheaper than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But again, that's my initial thoughts on it, we'll see what happens, once we get some numbers from Saint John and see what what kind of value we can get off of that property. Um, does that kinda recap your? All right, yeah, any other comments, concerns?
No, well, I I'd just like to say, uh, whether or not it's a bond for twenty twenty, or whether or not it's regardless of the item, you have to go out and sell it and market it, regardless of what it is. Everybody has to be on board, council, staff, uh, have a plan and a goal, and go after it. And make it known to the community what what the purpose is for, and 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 this is what we're going for, but yeah, just to wait till uh, twenty nineteen and a half and then say, well, maybe we'll just kinda wait and put it in the paper. No, I think it's, it needs to be sold marketed, uh, by uh way before twenty twenty.
And I, I think we're way out ahead of it at this point, you know, because we see the value of it and we see the potential of it. And as a community, you know, the community, if they don't know that we own that that uh property there, ripping trees out and allowing them to park there might remedy that, so they'll start to see that there's, um, some potential for growth, new ball fields, new uh athletic uh endeavors out there, so that may motivate them more, so. I think the short term, we need to get on it, so we can lessen the load on your plate, and we can get uh some money uh generating off that property. And uh, we'll move forward with how we talked. Agreed?
Good.
Good, good. Okay. All right, now it's time for matters presented from the audience, anybody wishing to speak on any non-agenda items, come on up, tell us your name, address, and what's on your mind?
Good evening, council, uh, Kurt Danzger, three eight nine, no, Nate, I wasn't really planning on saying anything tonight, but now I am all excited, that was uh very good, Peter. Um, I I didn't wanna address the last issue because I wanna address the bond issue. And it's a lot more complicated than any of us know. There's a general obligation bond, you gotta have infrastructure there where it's actually being administered. And there's a lot of work that goes into that, we haven't even scratched the surface. And I don't know, you know, the staff is busy. I I I don't know the answer to this, but maybe we can get somebody from, you know, the school district to help us out on how they did this, you know, rather than reinvent the wheel. And a- as Danny pointed out, it's gotta be unanimous up here. I heard one negative voice at our last meeting about that, and as I left here, I thought, it won't work. You can't go four one, you can't go three two, you can't have a poison pill out there saying, yeah, you know, we don't really need this. I I think it's far and above time. There is no opposition to that uh measure E, none, there's no rebuttal. So, li- like Peter says, I think it's gonna pass. And I think that that may hurt, you know, in the short term, any of our chances to to pass something as large or larger uh on it, I, you know, uh, as I said before, I don't have anything against a football stadium or all weather track, I just don't wanna pay for it now when we have other things to pay for. And and I think, like Peter said, it it's in reverse order. We have stuff that we wanna do. Um, a lot of work went into changing over Cabral Park for Hogan Park there, and, you know, maybe twenty twenty hindsight is, we could've gone with a bond issue right after that and and fixed that part, but uh, having said that, I I think that I'd rather spend my money right now on the city. I I think, cause I think it benefits everybody. If we have that park there, like he says, it's gonna be a nice draw for whoever comes into this city. If we can updo the treatment plant and get that water in here, maybe we can alleviate some of that fifty gallon uh, limit that's gonna be happening, you know, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just thinking, I think it would benefit everybody if we went and did stuff for the city first, you know, the school second, they're always gonna run around that track. You know, you didn't have the right spikes, but uh, again, it's gotta be a total sale. Uh, there's a lot of work, I think we really need to get going on it, just just to find out if we can do it. You know, I I, if this other one passes, I don't know that it's gonna really be feasible. You know, it's a hard pill to swallow after a while, you know, seven thousand people, or how many people are in the school district, eight thousand, uh, to pay for that bond, so, you know, do they wanna do fifty million dollars worth of bonds, you know, within two years of each other, I don't know. You know, I personally, I would, you know, I can't stop the school, but I'd still vote for the other. And as far as the property uh out there, you don't have to rip out all the trees to put up a giant sign saying, this is the future home. You know, I I like that idea, you know, get that community buying, but you don't have to take everything out, you can still put it right there in the front of the road and and what have you. Um, I think the last thing would be, man, I'm not even gonna address the house, that was the last one, thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Anybody else, any non-agenda items?
Good evening, uh, mayor, council and community, I'm Jason Laughlin, a field representative for Assemblyman Heath Flora, here to give my legislative update, I wanna start out with, uh, Assemblyman Flora voted against, uh, several anti-police officer bills this year, for example, AB nine thirty-one would have taken away, uh, uh, reasonable force and replace it with necessary force, which would have put officers in danger. Uh, there's a plethora of other bills this session that would have, but just put officers in danger, and Heath voted against all of them. Uh, but we are very happy to report that this year, Assemblyman Flora introduced five bills and all were signed by the governor. AB nineteen fourteen allows excavators to utilize power-operated equipment to dig before uncovering underground utility lines. Once the state excavation board establishes regulations, you're currently only allowed to use hand tools to dig unless you've already uncovered a line. This creates serious issue for efficiency and uh worker fatigue. AB two five six one ensures that the most updated, correct version of a birth certificate is available when a person goes to purchase a copy from uh the county clerk. AB twenty-six hundred streamlines the LAFCO process by allowing the board of supervisors to bring forward a motion to create an open space district, like a park. AB two four six one requires the DOJ to forward subsequent arrest information to the Department of Social Services. Um, AB two nine eight nine establishes a framework for local governments to regulate the new emerging scooter market as well. In addition to that, Assemblyman Flora had Assembly Resolution one eight one, which would designate State Route one thirty-two as Deputy Sheriff Dennis Wallace Memorial Highway. And there was also Assembly Resolution one six, I'm sorry, Assembly Resolution one seven nine, which would designate a specified portion of State Highway Route eighty-eight between Comstock Road and East Harney Lane in the county of San Joaquin as Deputy Sheriff Robert Bob Harris Junior Memorial Highway. Two officers that died in the line of duty tragically, we'll, we will have those highways uh named after them. And that is my update, I will leave my business cards if anyone from the community uh has questions for me, thank you.
And we also uh received from Assemblymember Flora's office, a uh city seal, similar to what they uh have in their office, representing the communities that they represent.
Yes, we have a project in our capital office and our district office. By the way, we're at five seven eight Wilma Avenue, everyone is welcome to stop by, we love visitors. But we have uh several municipalities that we represent in our district, and we have every city seal, um, in our, in our office hanging up, so, thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks for being here.
Absolutely.
All right, any other matters from the audience, not on the agenda? All right. That will take us to our public hearing, or I'm sorry, our administrative matters, item number eight, consideration of resolution number forty dash eighteen, a resolution of this Escalon City Council opposing San Joaquin County's county commercial cannabis business tax, measure B. And we have Supervisor Winn here with us, who uh is a sponsor of this uh resolution here. Want to uh tee this up here? All right.
I'd like the mayor and the city council for the opportunity, uh, I will make this fairly brief. Um, it's been quite a, a uh a challenge in regards to board supervisors, uh, the final vote was three to two. By virtue of that, uh, this tax measure has to go to a two-thirds vote to pass, uh, which makes it a little bit higher than than, um, than Prop sixty-four, and by the way, Prop sixty-four in Escalon, uh, failed, uh, fifty-four to forty-six, so congratulations on that. In fact, uh, District Four, which is my district, um, had the highest rejection rate, which was fifty-six to forty-four for the entire district, which includes Lodi, Escalon and Ripon, so I wanna thank all those entities for for uh for voting against something that was gonna be very damaging to this state. Uh, first of all, I won't go through all all the information. Uh, other than, for several decades, there's been a movement to legalize marijuana in in states, and it start, it always starts with medicinal, that kinda cracks open the door, nineteen ninety-six was the threshold in this state. And so for over twenty-one years, we've had recreational marijuana. Uh, it's all, you know, couched as being compassionate, et cetera, but the reality is, probably less than six percent of those who quote, have medical cards for medicinal marijuana, actually need it. Uh, and and I understand the glaucoma and the cancer, and I and I don't, I don't challenge those things because if it if it helps, fine, and I'm I'm supportive with that. The other part of it is, by virtue of this, um, it will put us pretty much in in the same situation that Calaveras County was recently, and if you follow the the history of their particular measure where they opened the door and now they're trying to close it, which is a challenge in itself. Uh, so I I talk in terms of Calaveras because it's it's right next door, I know three of the supervisors up there, and so I've kinda gone through this, this uh battle, so to speak, with them. Uh, I will tell you this, when they opened that door, their social welfare costs went up four hundred percent. Their homeless population exploded, violent crime increased dramatically, murders, but, you know, robberies, et cetera. And so, that's why they closed it again, because it was just, it was destroying their county in so many different ways. And the other thing whi- which is happening, which is interesting, and and this probably applies to farmers more than anything in regards to property values. Uh, I have a cousin in Humboldt County, uh, and it passed up there, obviously. But uh, she says their property values, her and her husband are retired, but it's shot up dramatically because land becomes premium when these particular operations are allowed. And so she was saying that her and her husband couldn't afford their house currently, based upon the increased value of those homes. And of course, for farmers, you know, it's no longer about crops, it's about, you know, having the opportunity and the location. So that obviously adversely affects our agriculture. Uh, I won't read these, but I just, just recently, and I I got tons of information over the years, last couple of years, this one is, um, feds take over violent Calaveras drug torture case, which is, was just the other day in the newspaper. And and what that basically happened is these individuals, six individuals, from Chicago, uh, Mountain, Morton Grove in Chicago, Phoenix, San Diego, basically came up there and robbed. in Chicago, Phoenix, San Diego, basically came up there and robbed and, and, uh, and assaulted and tortured some of these, uh, growers. And, uh, so what happened is they were being prosecuted, Calaveras County, but then when they went to Fresno, the feds stepped in and they're taking over the case, and the county's letting them do that. But this is the emphasis that the federal government started to look more and more in regards to these types of cases. Uh, California pot home delivery, police chief says robberies are a tip. The iceberg as marijuana delivery, delivery permits expand. This particular measure B will allow deliveries, uh, from unincorporated areas into cities. There's no, uh, restriction on that, which means that as Escalon prohibits those activities, if, if there's a dispensary anywhere in the county, that they'll be able to deliver it to your residents. And that's another adverse impact upon the city. Uh, two arrested in attempted robbery in Carpandria. Uh, another, uh, employee's assaulted during grow robbery in Monterey County. It, it goes on and on and on. And I think the main concern that I have, to be honest with you, I, I had the, really the, the pleasure of, of teaching college for nine years and, and working with youth, and it was a great opportunity. But for example, in Colorado, which kinda started this domino effect, they have special, uh, rehabilitation or, uh, addiction center, treatment centers, uh, for youth. And essentially what they've said is that ninety percent of, of their patients, their clients, uh, are there because of marijuana addiction, although the marijuana industry says it's not addictive. The other ten percent are there, most of them are there, because they started marijuana and they progressed to other drugs. And so this is something that happens. The last part in regards to this is, uh, it's been shown during research is that there are youth, and, and I would say Escalon was probably a primary community, because, you know, Escalon is law-abiding, you, as was said, uh, by Peter and others, you know, they have a great community and, and great recreation activities, parks, et cetera. But, but it has been shown that, that there are some youth who will not try something illegal just because it's bred in them by their families, et cetera. However, if it, it becomes legal, they have more of a tendency, as probably some of us, I know probably the mayor didn't do it, but some of us when we were underage may have given a little money to an adult to go into a liquor store and buy something for us. And, and so the problem is that, that some who would never try it because it's illegal will try it because it is available to them. And I understand, you know, Santa Claus has some allowances. I know that Sacramento is, and, and I get it. And, you know, the argument is, well, it's all around us, let's participate. Well, the participation which they all talk about is the money. Uh, it's gonna cost, uh, estimated San Joaquin County, uh, when this thing occurs, uh, about eight and a half million dollars additional just to, to inspect it, to, to certify it, to permit it, and then of course to enforce against it. Uh, by this particular measure, which is a three and a half percent tax, goes up to eight percent progressively. They estimate maybe two point three million in generator revenue. And the problem with that is, is the first year, excuse me, thirty percent goes to prevention children's programs. In the fourth year, it's fifty percent for thereafter. And as the chief knows, it is not inexpensive to enforce marijuana violations. And so one of the problems that we're, we're faced with is not only will the revenues and the fees not return the amount of money necessary to operate or to maintain it, but, uh, we're gonna go deeper in the hole, and we're gonna have more problems as opposed to currently, it's a prohibition countywide, which we have the opportunity to really focus on the illegal grows. Washington State, for example, that there was a study that showed that, um, they were growing illegal grows, because it's legal in Washington, illegal grows between legal grows. And, and it took them several years just to identify them because they thought they were all one basically grower. And so by virtue of having it illegal, if you see it, it's illegal, and you take it out. And I know the chief, you know, I, I know there's not any, any illegal cultivation in, in the city of Escalon. But, uh, but out, outside the city, we do have to deal with that. Uh, this is something that, that really will change the environment and the culture and, uh, and the values within our county. And, uh, the only currently in the city that allows it is the city of Stockton. Uh, and, uh, they're allowing four dispensaries. But I will tell you, based upon what I've seen in other states, it, it's only the tip of the iceberg, cause once that door's open, they are legally challenged to open it up even wider, because if they don't, they're, they're alleged to be discriminatory, oppressive or whatever. So once you open that door, as opposed to sixty-four, which allows cities and counties to prohibit, as Escalon has done, uh, that's probably your strongest defense from a legal standpoint, because if you do anything else to, to barely, uh, crack that door open, there's gonna be a train that's gonna come through it. So that, that's the challenge I have. I appreciate the opportunity, Mayor, to, to speak before your council. Uh, I, just a side note, I, Tanny made a comment, I, I have to, I, I had lunch with, with Mayor Tubbs today, and we were talking about homeless. And one of the things we talked about were the bathrooms. Now I know, cause we were talking about temporary, now I know how much they cost. Uh, but we were talking about security guards. You have to have security guards in them because of the damage that's occurred. So I learned something tonight, so I, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have in regards to this, but it's pretty sure.
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Your Dan.
Well, well, Stockton passed that they have four dispensaries. So what's the stats on that? Are they making money? Are they creating more homeless or?
Well, they haven't really, uh, it isn't full-blown yet. In fact, I'll be honest with you, I, I've had some contact by, by some individuals in the city of Stockton who are very concerned about the county. Because this is what happens. It, it happened in, certainly in states, like for example, the state of Washington, when they first passed it, they, they had, uh, commercial businesses along the borders of the state to, to the states that were adjacent of them that didn't have it. Now Oregon has it, et cetera. And so the, the potential here is, and I understand land use planning and all the zoning, those types of things, but, but those things, you know, can be changed. So what happens is, is if you as a city don't allow it, if they have an opportunity in the county to place a dispensary just out, outside your state limits, they will. And, and believe me, because, because your city is, is a fertile, you know, environment for them, because if you don't have it here, if they're just outside, they become the local dispensary, although they're not in the city limits itself. And that's one of the challenges. So it, it, it's a culture changer. I mean, I, I, I would tell you this. For example, as they've gone through Colorado, Washington, Oregon, California, and now San Joaquin County, there's a common thread of all these particular ballot measures. And the thread is either youth or education, one or the other. We did, you know, the, the board, because we were looking at this, you know, after sixty-four passed, we did a poll, and we found without children connected to this measure, it would fail miserably. But by adding children, it passes. And, and that really, the, the sad part of that, if any of you, probably most of you too young, but, but when they passed the lottery, you know, for the schools, uh, I was on a parent teacher, uh, board, which was administer that money. We, we got almost nothing out of that, and I'm, I'm not sure it's ever happened. And then we, we look at California, they promised a hundred eighty-five million dollars, at least projected for the first six months this year. They got eighty-two. And it's been that way in Colorado. In fact, if you read the Denver Post and places like that, uh, school districts in Denver are complaining because they've got very little money, a little bit of, of boiler money, boiler replacement money, things like that. But this avalanche of revenue that supposedly came never did. And, and frankly, the other part of it is, is once these, um, businesses actually, uh, are embedded within your community, as far as all the great things they're gonna do for you, they don't happen. So, um, you could talk about campaigns, and you talk about, you know, getting people to vote. And I would say that if it happens, it'll be unfortunate. We'll deal with it, but if it happens, uh, we're all gonna be affected whether you have a prohibition in your city or not. So anyway, again, appreciate the opportunity. And, uh, again, any questions you might have. Robert?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, actually, in Calaveras County situation now, do they, when they first allowed it, do they have a similar tax, you know?
Calaveras County, it was kinda interesting experience, because they went, they went hog wild.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, the reason I say that is because, for example, they had, uh, about seven hundred and thirty applications for different marijuana businesses. Uh, they approved, uh, three hundred and eighteen. And, and they generated a lot of money. Uh, but not right now, and one of the reasons they shut it down is that they have about a one point two billion dollar environmental cleanup cost to the damage they did to their environment.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, you think, well, that's there. But remember, Calaveras County is a watershed county for us. So the water that comes from there comes down here. And, uh, so that's why they went the other way, cause it was just, it was just killing their county in so many different ways.
I mean, did they not take that into consideration when they started, you know, accepting applications left and right? Or, I mean, the cost of the legal marijuana versus keeping the black market going, or what, what?
Government, government has this fixation that, you know, and, and it's sold in such a, a, um, a robust way that this passes, I mean, all your budget problems will be over. And you talk about, you know, a bond measure, uh, you know, there are some cities that say, hey, you know, let's open the doors, you know. And, and you take Sonoma County, for example, which has had a doormat out, you know, welcome mat out for years for marijuana. There was an article just two months ago, they're complaining because the violent crime has spiked so high, they can't even deal with it. So you, you get what you asked for indirectly, I guess, and that's the problem. So to answer your question, uh, I think, and, and again, and they've gone through several, as you know, several supervisors, uh, through this course. And, um, but the problem is, is, is it never produces what it promises. And, uh, you know, one of the arguments I've made at, at the board is, listen, i- if you really wanna do this, then wait. Let's wait a year or two, see what happens in other counties, and whatever, you know, mistakes they make. And if you wanna do it, put forward, but at least make sure that we do it right, as opposed to just jumping off the cliff with everybody else. And that's essentially what's happening. So I think Escalon certainly has made the right smart move, and, and Ripon and Lodi, uh, I'm speaking to Lodi City Council, they're, and hopefully have asked a resolution. Ripon already has. My point is, is that I think that, that by, by, if for no other reason, just holding off and waiting to see, I don't ever think it'll be beneficial, but nonetheless, I certainly wouldn't wanna take on something that I would not know what the outcome was gonna be. I think that's, that's certainly judicious on, on your part and certainly on ours. So.
I, I have a question. When it came to the, uh, cultivation in the unincorporated area in the county?
Mm-hmm.
W- was it for, was it, did the, uh, commission go for the, uh, cultivation originally?
You mean in, in the county?
Yeah, in the unincorporated area.
Our ordinance, our ordinance, which, which we've already crafted and goes to Planning Commission this Thursday, uh, essentially, uh, and it, and it doesn't actually become, uh, uh, live until it, this measure passes, Measure B passes. So if it, if it doesn't pass, everything's gone. We, we maintain what we currently have, which is total prohibition. The, the Measure B, or at least the ordinance, provides for everything, including delivery, with exception of outdoor cultivation and cannabis events.
Okay. So that's what I thought. So if it, if it passes, still outdoor cultivation and cannabis events?
They're, they're prohibited. They're not allowed. Everything else is allowed. You know, since two, two thousand and eleven, the Sheriff's Department is, is probably eradicated almost seven hundred thousand plants in this county. And we're just talking unincorporated, we're not talking about, you know, cities, et cetera. Uh, and I, I know Santa Claus County, I've talked to some of the supervisors down there. Uh, it, it is around us. Uh, Calaveras County estimates they have probably over two thousand illegal grows in their county. Yuba County has six thousand illegal grows, and they've declared a state of emergency. And, uh, by the way, they've eradicated thirty-eight. So it gives you kinda the, the breadth of the problem as it, as it exists. This is all about the legalization, the permitting, licensing, all those things. And what they're finding in a lot of these counties, Humboldt being one of them, uh, is a lot of the growers who've been growing for years, either been distill or whatever, uh, they're not getting licensed. Uh, my cousin's neighbor paid thirty-seven thousand dollars, she doesn't, still didn't have a permit. And a lot of them saying, well, wait a minute, I've been growing this for, you know, twenty-five years, and now I'm gonna grow it, but I'm gonna pay forty-five percent in taxes and fees? Why? Because, you know, frankly, the enforcement is, is sporadic at best. And so you have a lot of people who continue that path.
Well, let me ask you a question. I mean, maybe it's a libertarian in me. I'm pretty ambivalent about, you know, to me, the cat's been out of the bag and it's six blocks away.
Right, right.
And so that's why initially I was, yeah, I had a lot of concerns with going along with a lot of these, just because I don't believe them all. Some, yeah, some are obvious. Yeah, of course it's caused a lot of environmental damage. Yeah, you know, and yes, of course it's caused a lot of violence. To me, the issue is that black market, that black market still exists. And what are we doing to solve that black market? Now granted, I think the fact that you have taxes up through the roof do everything to promote the black market.
You're right.
Okay, so who's gonna wanna buy illegally, leaving still, sell it cheaper illegally? What do you think though can be really done to start putting a, a spike into that black market?
It, it's not just the taxation and the trying to, you know, corner the market. The black market, they're, they're out there making money hand over fist, and they're trying to control the entire market.
Yeah.
You know, they can run people out of business or take over their grows and stuff. There's, it's a complete fallacy to think that by legalizing it, that you're eliminating the crime associated with it.
And the black market is also, as the supervisor alluded to, is that you have it being shipped. You have states all surrounding Colorado that were suing Colorado.
Right, right.
For the quality of life issues because of, of most of the marijuana being grown in, I think the last estimate I saw was at least eighty percent of the marijuana being grown in Colorado was being shipped out of Colorado. And that's the same thing you're, I, I see the same reports. And.
Yeah, and I don't know what you do.
And you're talking about this issue. I mean, we're dealing with this issue, maybe on smaller scales, but we're dealing with this issue. I mean, just this last week, and I, I'm talking about impacting our youth, is that we were at the school. There was a bag found with a large amount of marijuana in it by school staff that had been stashed next to the school. And the next day, we have a parent calling us because of a child who has over two ounces of, of marijuana in his possession. And the kid reminded me of a nineteen eighty stoner movie. Trying to talk to him. He was so out of it when he claimed he wasn't, cause we were talking to him and he claimed that he was holding it for somebody. But then he starts using terminology like, oh, they fronted it to me. You don't use that terminology that you're gonna front it to me if you're just holding it for somebody. You're holding it to sell.
Right, right, right.
And, you know, but it's, it's, it's here. It's, it's damaging. We're seeing it, you know, it's, I mean, probably the greatest example was just recently in El Grove, the DUI collusion that caused the death. Was it marijuana, circumstantial influence marijuana?
Well, see, and this was so tough. I just don't know what you do to, to mitigate this. I mean, I know that you buy, with this tax, what it's proposing, like you say, yeah, it's, it's gonna, we'll be making the same mistake that Calaveras County made. You know, so it's, it's, it's a little reckless to vote y'all on that thing.
The, the argument has been that, that if, if we legalize it, we'll drive the illegal out of business, because, you know, it's safer, it's more available, it's out in the open, all these things. Doesn't happen. In fact, in Colorado, the, the, the black market is exploded.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, and part of it is just economically. To answer your question about how it'll go away, the only way it'll go away, when the price of legal goes down to a point where it competes against illegal.
Right.
And, and that's the only way you'll ever make that choice.
Right, right.
As a libertarian, I, I don't disagree with you.
That's my thought too.
I don't, I don't disagree. However, he, here's the problem, is that, you know, and I'm not so naive to think that it's not gonna happen in your city. And when I say that, you can grow six plants, which, you know, is, is just a start. And you don't need six plants for yourself or even your entire family. Even your extended family, you don't need six plants. So, but anyway, my, my point is, I get it. I understand that. All, all we're trying to do, at least Supervisor Elliott, uh, uh, Mayor DeBrom and, and Mantika, Mayor Nakaneishi in Lodi, and, uh, Vice Mayor Holman in, in the city of Stockton. We're just trying to make sure that, that what we have, we can preserve as best we can. I'm not saying we'll be able to stop it, because they'll be able to drive the Stockton or i- i- in schools, the surveys is, how long does it take you to get marijuana as opposed to a six pack of beer? It takes far longer to get a six pack of beer than it does a marijuana. So I mean, it's everywhere. And, and, and my, my concern is, and, and I've seen youth in, in, in classes that have gone down to a point where they drop out. And, and these are sharp young people, young, you know, men and women. And, and I, I'm just, and I guess from my background, and I know the mayor and his background, you see the tragedy involved, whether it be alcohol or drugs, it makes no difference. And, and that's my concern. And, and most importantly, Robert, and I, you make a good point. If on the one hand, if, if government and we support, you know, the distribution and sale of, of drugs and marijuana is a drug, then, then the, the other part of it is, then they want to take the money from the rev, from the revenues and tell young people not to use it, from a prevention standpoint. I, I don't, I don't wanna send that mixed message. I wanna say, we're against it because we know it's bad for you. When Ronald Reagan took office, high school students which were habitual user, I saw, frequent users, sixty-one percent in nineteen eighty. When he left office in eighty-eight, it was nineteen percent. Why was that? I mean, a lot of people laugh and make fun of, of Nancy Reagan, just say no, from an Oakland school, uh, student she talked to. But it worked. And, and the problem we're having now is for, for decades now, government has, has really just kind of stepped back and let the marijuana industry, you know, propagandize. It's just like Big Tobacco has done cigarettes. I mean, they wanna sell to youth. And, and I've, I've been into a dispensary, and I'll tell you, they got products in there that are very attractive to youth, because they have cartoon carriages here. They're not selling to me as an adult.
Right.
So the question is, you know, who's looking out for your best interest as a council member, certainly as, as. certainly as, as a parent or grandparent? And, and that's one of the concerns, I wanna send the right message. So anyway, I, I appreciate the time and, and hopefully answer all your questions.
No, we certainly appreciate the efforts to bring the awareness of Measure B to the communities out here. We, like you said, our community resoundingly, you know, disapproved Prop Six Four. So that's where we take our direction from. You know, our communities, they don't want it, they don't want it recreational, they don't wanna dispensary here, so that's where we moved forward from. So I personally have no problem, you know, moving on the resolution to support the resolution opposing San Joaquin County's commercial cannabis business tax.
Is that a motion?
That will be a motion.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
And by the way, one of these, I, I really appreciate the discussion you've had. Maybe sometime I'll come back during public comment and talk about some of the issues, like SSGID. We had that discussion at the meeting on Wednesday with the Sigma and Escalon, and some other things. But anyway, I appreciate listening to what you had to say. I always, I always appreciate, you know, individuals who are working at the local issues. You know, sometimes you get too far away and it's, you know, but anyway, so.
You know how it works. You did it a lot of years. So, you know, the kind of issues that we're struggling with here, you know, Ripon is, is kind of our sister city. I mean, you have some benefits that we don't have, and, you know, you've done a, a nice job with Ripon, and we're happy to see you in the supervisor seat, so.
Sometimes we, we need to talk about bonds.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. All right. Item number nine, consideration of approving nonprofit organization applications for reduced fees for the use of city facilities.
So Mayor and Council before you are two applications, one from the American Legion, Post Two-Sixty-three, and one from Valley Homeschool PTC. Based on our guidelines, American Legion's application does qualify, but the Valley Homeschool PTC does not qualify. Now, I will say that the Valley Home PTC was previously approved by the council prior to putting these guidelines and this application into place. But they, they did note on theirs that the majority of their organization members do not live within the nine-five-three-two-zero zip code. And the fundraising specifically goes to their school, which is not from the nine-five-three-two-zero zip code. So before you is to approve American Legion and then disqualify Valley Home from the nonprofit reduced fees unless the council chooses to give the, um, staff a different direction.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I think if we start granting exceptions, we'll be right back in that same boat again, chasing our tails around and around. So my, my personal preference is to move on staff's recommendation, approve the American Legion and disqualify the Valley Home PTC.
Second?
We have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Council Communications, Danny, what's on your mind?
Well, I have a question and then a comment, but which one you want first? I'll make the comment. And I wanna thank Supervisor Winn for coming and give us a presentation on the, uh, the measure on cannabis. Comments from Peter and Kurt and everyone else that came up, everyone that attended, it's nice to hear the great comments, what's going on at Flora's office and what you're doing, Jason, good to do that. I like the dialogue on the issue, with the park or, or the land or whatever the issue. I, and again, I'll reiterate that all hands on deck, a one-hundred percent effort for marketing and sales on anything, and any community can get something done. And that's about all. Oh, no, I have the question. Tammy, what are the guidelines and any protocol on any Babe Ruth or baseball tournaments held at the community center?
Um, we don't have any technical guidelines. If you're referring to city-hosted or, like an outside organization coming in, an outside organization would need to rent the fields.
Right.
Um, if it's to be city-run, then we would have to figure out how we're going to manage, who's gonna organize it.
Right, so if it's outside, it's gonna be the, the cost of the rental, how many days, and that's it?
Right, yeah. And there's actually a tournament rental rate. So, for tournaments. We've never had anybody use it, but we do have it.
Could I get that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the tournament.
Sure.
Right, yeah. That's all, thank you.
All right, good question. Walt?
I have a question regarding, we're online now. I went to watch it on YouTube, and it says there's no sound.
So our first meeting that we streamed, we did have a technical difficulty. So there was a misunderstanding of where the sound was going through, so it got plugged into the wrong piece of equipment. But last week, I streamed the Planning Commission, and it worked, and there was sound. And then tonight, we have been streaming also.
I couldn't think of anything more boring than putting in a
Absolutely. Yes.
That's all I got. Mayor Pro Tem Swift?
Imagine the fun that people could have with us, is just, I'm just saying, you, you think it's boring, just imagine some of the comments that people would be making. Well, Consmers also said this, I don't know. Regarding the bond issue and the parking issue, they're all linked. And I think, yeah, I agree with Councilmember Fox, this is a big idea. Yeah, would it have been great twenty-twenty hindsight to do this ahead of the school? You betcha, you betcha. Might it be uphill? It might be uphill. But it's worth it. All great ideas are worth it. And I think this is a great idea, I think it's a big idea, and I think it ties into the whole notion of, when Councilmember Fox asked about the tournaments just now, imagine what we can do tournament-wise with a state-of-the-art field out there. I just think that it will take a lot of work. I think we will have to be all in on it, but I think it's gonna be worth it. And again, thank you Supervisor Winn for coming. I was almost gonna mention the mayor here, he may not, he may need to cut me off if we were to keep talking, because I just enjoy the conversation. I don't have the answers. This is a big issue, and it's, and again, it's like a tiger by the tail. How do you handle this so that it doesn't bite you hard? Because it's like Calaveras County, it's been a lot of people hard already, so, seven. But thank you very much for coming tonight. So, and that's it.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Well, we wouldn't be having some of these conversations if we weren't looking to the future and looking to the needs of the community, particularly the the park property. You know, we'd still be dealing with the property on Ulri and trying to figure out how we're gonna develop that, how we're gonna police it, how we're gonna take care of that. So taking advantage of opportunities that present themselves, that's kind of the hallmark of what a council needs to do. So even during a recession, even during some very difficult times, we were able to make some moves to lay that foundation so that we could move forward with the increased park space. And now that we own it, now is a time to be creative and try and find funding sources so we don't overtax the community to pay for it, but we can move forward with it. I appreciate the conversation as well on the marijuana issue, I'm sorry, cannabis. We don't call it marijuana anymore, it's cannabis now. And, you know, again, our community standards set the tone for what we do. And we have a supervisor that's working hard to make sure that our core values are represented at the, at county level. So we very much appreciate that, and the efforts you're making to ensure that, that we've got a voice. So we've talked about our sphere of influence, we certainly do not want, and I'm confident our community does not want a dispensary right next to our city limits or within our sphere of influence. And the further we can push that back, the better. Each jurisdiction should have that right. Stockton can make their decision on how they wanna proceed, Calaveras County can do it, but when it comes to our local jurisdictions, we should have that say, we should have that input, and our community rightfully demands it. So we've made the moves that we've made on the council to try and protect our community values as best we can. So hopefully, you'll be successful with defeating Measure B. So we'll do what we can to help you with that. We're also getting some great representation from Assemblymember Flora's office. I can't tell you how nice it is to be paid attention to. We're a small jurisdiction, you know, we don't have a lot of issues, we don't have a lot of problems that we have to run up the flagpole, but when we do, it's nice to have somebody in our corner fighting for what we're asking for.
Yeah, brief aside.
Yes, sir.
I do wanna thank Jason for coming out at the, the Chamber Ribbon Cuddings, too, and being a part of the community in that sense, too. It means a lot to the local businesses that Xander into town, we give them a ribbon cutting. It means a lot to them to have you come out representing the Assemblymember. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, my pleasure. Thank you. That's a good point, 'cause having been on this council for a while, we had no ribbon cuttings. We were trying to, you know, fill commercial space, trying to keep businesses going. But over the last couple of years, we've had a good turnaround. The economy has improved significantly, and we're getting businesses that are coming into town and we're able to celebrate their opening and taking up space here in Escalon and trying to make a go of it. So that, that is another, you know, silver lining that we've seen over the last couple of years. So, so as contentious as some of these issues can be, it's nice to be able to have the conversation now, because there was a time where we couldn't have any conversation like this. It was like, how are we gonna keep the lights on? How are we gonna keep, you know, services delivered to the community? And we're in a much better spot now, and that's a testament to the staff here, because they have taken on a number of hats, a number of roles, as we have collapsed in on ourselves. So we've got a staff that does a fantastic job for this community. They provide the services as if they were a much larger city with much larger staffs. So I can't say enough for the work that you guys do. Sorry I missed the poker night, you know, employee appreciation night, had to tend to some family requirements there out of state. But, you know, it's, it's nice to see that, and it's nice to acknowledge that as well, because they really do a fantastic job for the community. And we don't get complaints from the community saying, I wish the, you know, there were more staff people doing this for me, or this, you know, whatever it is. We get lots of compliments about the professionalism, the work, the responsiveness. So that, I just can't say enough how proud I am to be associated with the staff like that, with a community like that. And a community that appreciates the staff, just for the appreciation night, you know, the, the outpouring of donations and support for, for that really reflects well on the community and how the community feels about the, the city staff. So with that, thank you very much for that. Thanks, everybody for coming, thank you for your input, and we'll keep the discussion going as long as we can.
And just to make a note, our closed session is closed, or is canceled for this evening. It will be continued on the next meeting.
Perfect, all right. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
You know the worst part about it?
The dependents, I guess, they use their money on the
Hey, did you see the stop sign there on everyone?
They're, they're
The red one?
Well, story short.
The guy ended up getting hauled off.
We got a youngster that we're gonna have you train.